Well, why don't I go ahead and get started? I'll just give a brief presentation about what we hope to do and then we'll have a little question and answer at the end. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I'm Danielle McKnight, town planner. And I see many have the letter, although it sounds like a couple of you didn't get it, so I'm sorry about that. I'm not quite sure why, but I'm just here to talk tonight about the CPC's request to town meeting to convey some properties that are within our affordable housing overlay district. I just, I'll mention if we have any issues with the audio or you can't hear me, just let me know if I have any trouble with the technology. I'm going to temporarily make Chris Hayden the host and then I'll log back out and log back in. So the purpose of our meeting tonight is to explain three warrant articles the community planning commission has submitted relating to four properties that are within the affordable housing overlay district. The CPC's goal is for these properties to be conveyed to a developer for small affordable housing projects to be built. The projects are zoned to allow this, but the town currently owns the property still. I'll explain the proposal and then the process we hope to use to convey these properties. And then we'd like your feedback and would welcome, you know, any questions. And if there's anything that you'd like to cover in more detail that doesn't get covered tonight, please feel free to or give me a call in the planning department. So I'm going to start screen sharing my presentation. Okay, is everyone able to see?
Yes.
The slideshow. Okay, great. I am not able to view all of you. Oh, here we are. Okay, good. So I should be able to see. If you have a hand up, but I don't stop, feel free to interrupt me because I'm not able to view everyone at once while the slideshow is going. Okay. This is overview of where all the properties are in the affordable housing overlay district. The bold red outline show the properties. They're not all that easy to see, so I'm going to give you a close up of the property, of the properties that we're actually talking about. Have a couple people to let in. There we go. Okay. There are 23 of these properties in total. Only four of them are being considered right now for development. There are seven St. Teresa Street, 44 and 46 Oakdale Road, and 57 Haverhill Street. We'll show them closer up in just a moment. First one, here's a closer look of the location of seven St. Teresa Street. The property is located behind the multifamily building at 258 Main Street. Several single family homes are across the street and the undeveloped parcels next to it and down and across the street, oh, excuse me, are owned by the conservation commission and they are not proposed for development. Forty-four and forty-six Oakdale Road. A few more people to admit. Okay, there we are. Forty-four and forty-six Oakdale Road together make half an acre. The road was extended and improved with paving and a water main and a hydrant several years ago. There are some wetlands to the north, and so we would anticipate a filing with the conservation commission depending on the placement of a home or homes on this site. Fifty-seven Haverhill Street is a site that belonged to RMLD before the town acquired it in a land swap. There are a few areas of wetlands around the front and southeast side of the property. So any placement of homes and septic systems would need to take those into account with the conservation commission filing anticipated, depending on the placement of a home or homes. Just to kind of give an overview of the affordable housing overlay district and what is allowed on these sites. These properties, along with 19 other properties, were rezoned in 2008 with the town's affordable housing overlay district. They were zoned for this purpose in '08, and there have also been highlighted in the town's housing production plan as a good opportunity to develop a few units of affordable housing, but they haven't yet been conveyed for this purpose. I'll go on to describe the zoning in a little bit more detail. I write, "A developer could put a single or two-family home here." "A special permit would be needed for a larger development, such as a single-family attached, a group of single-family attached houses or multifamily units up to eight units." There are also some provisions in here for reusing municipal buildings under the affordable housing overlay district, but that doesn't apply to any of these properties. They're all vacant. There are also dimensional and density limits that need to be met. So for example, 40% of each site would need to be left as open space. Building area is limited to 20% of a site for a single-family home and 25% of the site for a two-family or a multifamily. The maximum height allowed is two and a half stories or 35 feet, which is the same height allowed in the rest of the town's residential zoning districts. The zoning was written for this district to make development blend well with the surrounding neighborhoods. And the intent is for small-scale development and not for structures to be taller than their surrounding zoning districts, although more units are allowed on these sites than in the surrounding properties. So this is, this was written and intended to be small-scale, not very large developments, not, you know, large towers or, you know, anything of a very, of a very intense, large, high-density kind of development. Um, go next to the affordable housing zoning district for setbacks. Single-family and two-family homes in this district need a front setback of 25 feet, a side setback of 20 feet, and a rear setback of 25 feet. Multifamily and single-family attached homes have a requirement of a 25-foot front setback, a 25-foot side setback, and a rear setback of 40 feet. There's a maximum density of one unit per 5,000 square feet of lot area in addition to these other limits. So while you could say that by lot area only, some of these sites could take, you know, an eight-unit development, you also have to consider that it can't be any higher than two and a half stories and it has to be 40% of the site is open space. So that is a pretty limiting factor for the zoning. In this zoning district also, the affordable units built under the bylaw need to meet the requirements to be included on the town's subsidized housing inventory. Currently, we are 22 units short of our 10% requirement for affordable housing. We're expecting when the official census numbers are released, we're expecting that gap to be much bigger, probably in the neighborhood of 50 units, although we don't have that confirmed yet. We're not looking to these sites to fill the entire gap. We are looking to these sites for potentially a few units, not, certainly not the full 22-unit deficit that we have. There are additional requirements which call for greater levels of affordability for this, for these zoning districts. The bylaw allows for some market rate development to be built along with affordable units in some cases, but the CPC's goal for these properties is for all the units built to be affordable. For one single-family home, that one house has to be affordable. For a development of two homes, the zoning would allow one of them to be affordable and one for market rate. For a development of more than that, at least a third has to be affordable. So, but again, the CPC's goal really is to seek for a developer to make units that are 100% of. And the bylaw also allows for a range of affordability with the affordable units priced to be affordable to a household earning up to 80% of the area median income. There are also other provisions in this bylaw that, where you could have a range of, you know, 65% area median income. A lot of the time, we get feedback on the 80% area median income units that they're not really affordable. For example, the Edgewood Apartments are 80%. They're still quite expensive, you know, by some standards. So we're hoping to find a little bit of a greater level of affordability for these units, but the, but the requirement is 80%. Our goals for conveying the property. The CPC would like for the town to convey these properties for no money. It's not something that we're hoping that the town would make a profit on to an affordable housing developer. We're not recommending market rate development, as I mentioned. The preference would be for 60% area median income and for all affordable units. No new zoning changes are proposed for these. We would not be necessarily entertaining, you know, a town meeting action to allow for anything different than what is, what they are zoned for. We expect the process to be used, to be a request for proposals. And the proposals wouldn't be to ask for, you know, to select a highest bidder because we're not really looking for a profit to be made. The proposals would be for a developer to describe the type of project, the number of units, and to talk about what type of project they could do, and we would be looking for them to propose things that would be, you know, a modest development that would fit well with the neighborhood. We would ask them to describe the development, the level of affordability. And then any developer that would be selected will be asked to hold neighborhood meetings to present their project and answer questions. I think even in the RFP development, we would want to have neighborhood meetings to make sure that we had input from, from the neighborhoods to, as we shaped what we are asking for, for proposals. Rather than just put it out and see what comes back, I think we really want to make sure we understand what the neighborhoods are comfortable with and whether there are preferences for numbers of units or certain type of development. And then in terms of public hearings, the single-family and two-family homes could be developed, you know, without any kind of a site plan review or special permit. That would just be like any other single-family home subject to a building permit, but anything that is a multifamily development would need a special permit, which would be a public hearing with the planning commission. And then all of these have wetlands somewhere in the vicinity, so depending on the placement of a project, we, for anything within 100 feet of a wetland, the developer would also need to file with the conservation commission, which would likely be another public hearing. For upcoming meetings, the select, the next, the next real step for this is, the select board is going to be holding their informational hearing on the warrant articles on Monday. That's a virtual meeting. That's going to be on September 20th. Following that is town meeting where the vote on whether these properties can be conveyed will be held. That's going to be at the high school on October 4th. And then if that, if that is successful, then there will be further neighborhood meetings as we would go through the process of developing, developing an RFP. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions here, any feedback, any concerns. And I'm going to temporarily stop sharing my screen so that I can see and hear everyone who would like to speak. Hold on one moment. Let's stop the screen share. And then if you have a question or a comment or would like to give us any feedback, if you could just state your name and your address and I'll be sure to note that down. And all the comments that we get tonight, I'll be submitting to the select board as well. Okay, sorry. Mr. DeChavre?
Diane, Mike DeChavre at 34 Heritage Way. Just a clarification, did you say if there's any billing that it's on wetlands, it has to go to another hearing?
Yes, anything within 100 feet of a wetland will need to be filed with the conservation commission and that will be. So there are some wetland areas on each of these properties, but depending on how it happens.
There are there are, there are there are wetlands. I've been up here 27, 28 years and I've gone to several of these. One was one developer wanted to come in and build on Haverhill Street, a large complex. And we went, we had town meeting and we had a planning meeting at that time and it impacted the wetlands, but they said that they could amend that and change the wetland area. And I stated publicly for the residents here on Chestnut and Heritage Way, the back of this area is wetlands. Right now it's flooded out there and there are water problems. And that developer at the time, several meetings we had, withdrew his proposal. They had since built four single-family homes in that area, but there was a multi-area complex. That, what I'm concerned about is the wetland area and so forth and development. That's, that's my main concern.
You may have to turn off your videos to get the voice coming.
Oh, I, I can hear you, but I think there was a little bit of a delay. So I just want to make sure I caught your comment fully. So I know you had some concerns about wetlands in the area and would, would just want to be sure that they were properly reviewed by the conservation commission.
Yeah, that's correct because the previous developer tried to come in here and build a large complex on Haverhill Street and withdrew after the neighbors and myself got involved because of the impact on the wetland area in this Haverhill, just that Heritage Way area.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful for me to know. I didn't know about the previous proposal, but I'll find out what information I can about that and also note your, your comment, concern about the wetland areas. Thank you.
Hi, this is Lionel Bean.
Highlight, I'll go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Two things. Now, I hear them on Heritage Way talking about the wetlands. But now I'm on, I'm on Chestnut, so I'm basically at the intersection. And my week basically consists of watching car accidents. So now you're going to throw a complex that's going to end up bringing in more cars when the cars that are already here can't even manage the four-way intersection. So what is the consideration for that? Because I mean, they already said they couldn't have a light and we literally hear their accident run down. Address is probably on speed dial at the police department considering we're running down all the time. And if you're allowed to put so many more houses, that means that's so many more cars. And people can't manage it now. And now you're going to have cars pulling out onto Haverhill Street. You know, I know Heritage is talking about their wetlands, but on Haverhill Street, we're just literally just watching accidents all the time. And now you're going to add cars coming out, which is probably just going to make it more. So what are they doing about that?
Okay. I, go ahead.
I agree with you. We, we live on Heritage Way. We go through that stop sign, intersection every day. And that, that, that stop sign has had an accident over the years.
Yeah, I don't even allow, I don't even allow my kids to go that way. I have them go down Central Street because it's just cars fly, there's no consideration. Like I said, it's like, like I said, we're at a dinner table and all of a sudden you hear a crash and I'm running down there. I'm running down and chatting to my wife's dialing 911. And I mean, it's, like you said, it's like a once a week occurrence and then hit the summertime and you got a little bit more than that. Now you have the kids back in school driving and we know they're not going to be managing it that well either. So now we're going to sit here and add more houses and that's just more traffic. Like you said, he's coming from Heritage Town. So coming from Heritage, Haverhill, Haverhill, Chestnut, they're all going to be at intersection.
Okay.
And the intersection probably has the most accidents in North Reading.
I think it is a very high crash location. I know our DPW is studying it right now for some improvements, but I don't know what the status is of it. Thank you for that. I definitely will note.
I think the last status was that they, they can't put a light there because then it will really confuse people when you have a blinking light. Because I was on the board, I was on the committee for the trucks not coming down Haverhill to New Street because the kids stood at the corner of Chestnut and Cedar and you had these 18 wheelers coming down. And that was a, that was a lost thing because the trucks can't go down Franklin Street because Reading already beat us to the punch. So that's why they come down to North Reading.
Okay, thank you for that. That is helpful.
Danielle, I have a question. Can you hear me? My name is Jeff Borkowski. I'm at 112 Chestnut.
Yes.
I have two, I have two questions. Is there ever a scenario where the 100-foot setback from the wetlands is changed, where it's reduced? That's question number one. And question number two is, if wetlands comprises, you know, X percentage of a property, is the wetlands considered, or is the wetlands considered to be part of the open space when it's completed if the wetlands aren't altered? Or is it the area outside of the wetlands that's, that needs to be more than 40, or 40% or greater?
So the zoning doesn't require that the wetlands be eliminated from that equation, so the open space can be wetland areas. Sometimes you can build within the 100-foot buffer. That's up to the jurisdiction of the conservation commission. They do sometimes allow that. There is a 12-foot no-build that I don't think they really ever allow building at all, but they often do issue permits and orders of condition for development within the 100-foot buffer, but it's dependent on their review and how they feel about how, the alteration, you know, to the wetland and the impact to the, to the resource area. But yes, that does happen with permits.
And then what's the process? You mentioned the conservation will get involved. I presume after the RFP process, is that right? And then there would be meetings about that to explain their findings?
Yes. So the goal would be to put out an RFP and then get specific development plans. And then based on a chosen development plan, if those plans were within the resource area, they would have to file with the conservation commission. And if the conservation commission determines that they require, you know, an order of conditions, they would, they would need to have a public hearing for that.
Right. And I've got one last question while I have you. How is it determined whether or not it's going to be a single-family or a multifamily development? Is that, when you solicit the RFPs, do you target or make suggestions to developers about what that should be? Or is it completely open to the developers to propose what they want to do with the site?
I think that's a question that, that we have for all of you tonight. The zoning allows for up to eight units where it fits on certain properties. Certainly, you know, 46 and 44 Oakdale couldn't fit eight units because it's, it's too small. But I think one of the reasons why we wanted to have this, this session was to hear some feedback. If, if we heard that, you know, a few single-family homes would be preferable to, you know, an eight-unit multifamily development or, you know, on a certain property, people really felt strongly that it should be, you know, restricted to a certain number of units. I think we would like to hear about that. I mean, I think that we're hopeful that the feedback wouldn't be, that there should be nothing built. I mean, of course, I understand that most people don't want anything to be built at all. But I think that we're hoping to get a sense of what could be tolerable and comfortable to the neighborhood. You know, I think the goal is to work, work with the neighbors. Knowing that the zoning does allow a little bit more, I think our goal is to get something built. And we don't want, you know, ambitions for really, you know, developments that are too big and don't fit. We don't want that to mean that nothing gets built. So I hope, I hope that's not, you know, a sidestepping of the question. We're hoping for your feedback about that.
All right. I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Sure, thank you.
So this is Lionel, this is Lionel Bean again. So how many units will be able to fit on the 57 Haverhill Street part? Did you say eight?
Fifty-seven Haverhill Street. So the maximum is eight units for these multifamily developments. Fifty-seven Haverhill Street could possibly be, you know, it's big enough that you could probably cut it in half and do twice that. I don't really think that that is what the neighborhood would find acceptable. I don't let me speak for you, but I have a feeling based on the feedback I've heard that that wouldn't really be an acceptable number of units. And I think that, you know, the, the other options are single-family homes, two-family homes. It could be, it could be much smaller than that depending on, you know, what, what we hear. And also there are the wetland areas, so you can't build on every square inch of that property. And you need to consider that a portion of it has to be left for open space, 40%. You also have to consider it can only be 30 feet, five feet high. These are things that could really limit it. So I can't tell you for sure the maximum number, but, but, but within the constraints of the develop, of the zoning that we have, we, we know that we're not targeting a very big project here. A few units, probably what form they would take, whether they're single-family houses or a small multifamily building, we're not really sure yet because we haven't seen proposals yet.
Danielle, does that get baked into the RFP as a covenant of any, of any sort?
It certainly can be. If that's the feedback that we hear from, from the neighborhood, that that's the preference, I think that that is definitely something that, that we would want to consider very seriously and make part of the RFP.
Danielle, this is Jay and Jane, my wife here at 32 Heritage Way. And Ty, can you hear me, Danielle?
Yes.
So tie back to what Mr. DeChavre, Mike, Diane said about wetland. And Mike, I know you're not, you're the only one, you're the one that actually hosts meetings, but you're not a, you're not for building the units. Thanks for hosting that, this meeting. And so my, my biggest concern about building units at Haverhill Street, 57 Haverhill Street, which is behind our Heritage Way, is that we have a, we have a big stream running along Mike's house and my house. And my neighbor on my right, if you face, if you're facing the house on the left, my neighbor Gary and Heidi's house, their last name is Hastings. There is a big stream running along the, along the back of around the, in, in the wetland area. When, when, when it rains, it gets really, really big, big streams. So my biggest concern is that when, when the units are built, if, if water management is, you know, is, if the builder doesn't manage the water situation and push all the dirt and all the stuff backwards, I don't, I'm not the builder. I'm not a professional builder or anything. It, it could cause more water and it could push water into our, into our land as well. So that, that's my biggest concern, Danielle.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. That's, that's important for us to know. We'll definitely note that as a concern.
Yeah, because if you, if you walk in, if you walk in my backyard and walk into the forest, maybe about 20, 30 feet, you can see that stream. On a normal day, it has water in there and if it rains, it gets really big.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. I think we would want to be sure there was appropriate engineering done and, you know, whatever engineering review was needed to be sure that it wasn't having a negative impact on, you know, the flooding of any, you know, neighboring homes. So thank you for that.
Danielle, this is Jack Gilboy at 114 Chestnut Street. And thank you again for hosting this conversation tonight. I think it's really helpful. I would like to echo, if you're looking for feedback in terms of the impact in the neighborhood, specifically the 57 Haverhill Street parcel, I'd like to echo the feedback of my neighbor at 124, the issue around traffic and the dangerous issue around the intersection of Chestnut Street and Haverhill. We are relatively new to North Reading. We're just about, we're four years as of yesterday in the neighborhood. And like our neighbors, we also frequently see the accidents that happen there. I have actually made multiple efforts to reach out to our representative Bradley Jones and ask about what kind of provisions can be made there. So all that ladders up to, I would strongly advocate for single-family home options there. And the limit, the limited number, the better. I do think traffic is a significant issue to be of concern.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. That's helpful.
Yeah, we're, we're 17 years at 124, so we've watched the grit.
Danielle?
I'm sorry, yes? I'm so sorry. I didn't want to cut anyone off. I think there was someone speaking.
Yeah, Danielle?
Yes?
No, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Yeah, I, you know, Zoom, I, thank you for hosting the meeting. Like, and I definitely concur with my neighbors. The traffic is terrible. The traffic is terrible, but what, what, what I, what I'm concerned about is the size of the proposed lot looks like more than one or two. And I would, and that just adds to the traffic. Never mind. My, my own needs and my neighbors' needs in the area is the wetlands. And if you look back on previous records, when I did mention the other development, it, I've said, I went on the record and say, we've never had water or backup in the area since I've lived up here for over 28 years. And it might, it might impact. And like I said, I know RFPs and so forth, but that, that is a major concern as well as the traffic and the impact on the area. And like I say, I was in public safety. I definitely know. And there has been traffic studies done on that area and speeding and so forth. And like I said, the gentleman proposed the heavy trucking. I remember that. So that's, that's, that's one of my major concerns as well as the impact on the property itself.
Okay, thank you. I see Don has his hand up.
Yeah, hi. Don Sheek and Chris Sheno, 57 Oakdale Road. You mentioned you were looking for feedback on the property. Put that in place.
I'm sorry.
When would, when, when would you be taking feedback on the properties?
If you have a comment now, I'm happy to to note it down now.
Yeah. Okay, so I I think it's great for the affordable housing in town. This is a twenty thousand square foot lot on, what do you think could go in there? Maybe a one or two family tops?
That's that's what I think. I think if you look at the the zoning might allow for up to a four unit development, but I don't think we'd be targeting that for this property. I think it's small enough, it has wetlands around it, it may have ledge, I've heard. I I don't think we're getting more than one or two two family homes.
Yeah, okay. I'd have an issue with four family, I think one or two.
Sure.
Right next to wetlands, you've got every other house in the area is single family, you have one as an in-law and that's it, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's helpful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi Danielle.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Tim Sutherland, seventeen Maple Road. I have a couple of questions. When this goes in front of town meeting, is this going to be one article or three?
This is three separate articles. Oakdale is together, because they would be conveyed together. But yes, there'll be three separate ones.
Okay, and then I think you've, so so with the forty four and forty six hotel, you mentioned it could be up to a two family residence. I mean, so I I butt that to the rear. That's a, that's a very small parcel. I'm just kind of wondering, the setback, I mean, it would sound like that would be on the street. So I'm not necessarily opposed to putting a home there, but that's a very narrow area. So just living in this area, I don't know, they're going to be on top of whoever is ultimately across the street there. So just something, when we're looking at that, I'm not sure that you can actually fit anything of any size.
You may be right. With the setbacks considered, it it may not be possible to get more than, you know, one house on that property, which I think would be a perfectly acceptable, you know, solution for that property. It is, it is a small lot, you're right. Okay.
And then one last, one last question on Haverhill, because I'm sure that's going to be the main concern of across the town is, is there a way to bind it? This could be very controversial at town meeting for all the traffic reasons that people are outlining. Is there a way to bind it in the article? Or does it have to get convey, approve for conveyance first and then do that? Because I think it'd be a sticking point with a lot of residents.
I think, I don't, I would have to check it probably with the with the moderator. But I think that there could be a motion that could further limit what would be allowed. I don't want to say that for sure, because sometimes, I mean, a motion has to have a, you know, has to be pretty closely related to. I I would, I would, I'll just say, I I would be happy to check that with the with the moderator to to find out if that's a possible thing to modify with a motion. Otherwise, it could then be modified with putting out an RFP where we would only be looking for a certain number of units.
You know, not living near there, but hearing the residents, and of course, I drive through there all the time. I think if you told the town at town meeting that you're going to limit it to four or six homes across six acres, I think that would go over far better than the traffic. And then you're going to hear about the schools and the impact of the batch, and you're going to hear about all of that. So if people get worked up, and there could be potentially twenty four residences on that property, I think that could pretend, you know, when it goes to town meeting, what seems like a good idea could turn into a lot of backlash if it can't be balanced. I would just be curious and some feedback if it can be bound, I think that would help at the town meeting help it pass.
Sure, okay, thank you. That that's very helpful. That's something I actually do plan to look into, because I sort of, I wondered if if that question may come up. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that.
Good evening, Danielle.
Hi, how are you?
I'm Sanchez, just here gathering information. Are there other properties that are being considered for this affordable housing project?
Right now, we're just looking at conveying these four sites. There are twenty three parcels throughout the town in the Affordable Housing Overlay District. Right now, we don't have them proposed for for conveyance at the upcoming town meeting. I hope in the future that we will be revisiting some of those properties. Right now, we're just focused on on these four. But there is also another site that we've been looking at on Carpenter Drive, which is a much larger site and it is being being studied for a much larger development. And we've had a neighborhood meeting as well with that, with the neighborhood. That project is not on the current town meeting, because we have some issues that we need to work through, I think, with that project. But for the Affordable Housing Overlay District parcels, we're just kind of considering these four for now, but we hope to do more in the future. You know, if if there is ever interest, I mean, I'm happy to, you know, note that interest and then work with someone to to plan for future disposition of other properties.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi Danielle, this is Christina Wyatt from one oh eight Chestnut Street. Good. Can you explain why these four properties were chosen versus the other properties that are designated for the district?
Sure. So first, I'll start by saying that if we do convey these properties, it will be by an open RFP. So we can't presume to know who the potential developer could be. But we were approached by Habitat for Humanity several months ago. And that sort of started the ball rolling on us, looking at this portfolio of properties to see which might be the most appropriate and suitable for development. While all of the properties went through sort of a screening process when they were rezoned, to be sure that there could be some kind of development that could could go there. These were properties that were looked at as stronger possibilities because they didn't require, you know, construction of a new roadway. There might be wetlands, but they were a little bit more limited and there was enough upland area that could be suitable for development. These were some of the reasons. And, you know, folks from Habitat from Humanity also had reached out to, you know, to 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 see what properties we we had in this, you know, zoning district. And these were mentioned as some possibilities, so these were identified as ones that might be a good fit for them. But that said, you know, it it would be an open RFP. And while they may well be chosen, you know, it I I couldn't say that before an RFP went out. But that that's the reasoning behind why these properties were being focused on right now.
Okay, thank you. I guess well, well, I'll echo the concerns of my neighbors with the water that's in my backyard and the the traffic we deal with leaving our houses every day.
Okay, and that would be for the Haverhill Street property?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Hi Danielle, Tim Sutherland, seventeen Maple Road. One more question. The the titles of these properties, will these always be deed restricted as affordable housing?
That is our goal. They, our our ask is for them to go onto the subsidized housing inventory, which the zoning does require. And if they if they are developed under that zoning bylaw, they would be, they would be deed restricted in in perpetuity.
And when would we find that? When you said that's our goal, when, during, what step in the process would that take place?
Um, so the the request that the planning commission has made of town meeting is for the properties to be conveyed for for affordable housing. But if it does pass, the select board does have the right to convey them without a restriction on them. That's not what we're requesting that they do. But it it could happen. I mean, in theory, I guess that that could happen. So that's why, I mean, our our goal would be for it for it to be put out that way. And I think what we would be doing is, if the if the warrant article, if the question is successful, what we would do is then work with the neighborhoods to to finalize terms of an RFP that we felt people were comfortable with. We would ask the select board to release that RFP. They still are the gatekeepers as far as it being town owned land. They are the ones who would decide under, you know, the terms and conditions that that they would be willing to convey the property. But but our, our, you know, request certainly is for these to be affordable. And if they are developed as affordable units under this bylaw, then they they do need to be deed restricted. There would have to be, you know, a regulatory agreement that gets approved by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And they would go on our inventory and they would be on there permanently. I hope that answers your question. I hope it's.
It does. It just goes back to the, I'm going to try to figure out if there's any way that some of these can, articles can be amended. Again, looking at the fifty seven Haverhill Street. You know, I think the other fear in town is somebody builds it and then five years later, somebody tries to convert it into luxury townhouses.
Oh.
That's, again, and I don't even know if that's a legitimate concern, you know, fear or concern, but I can only imagine that the rumors around town regard, really, really that parcel is, I think, the hardest one, right? Just given the size and the occasion. So just something to think about. I'm just trying to understand when we, if and when the town signs up for this at town meeting, what we're signing up for and 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 how much we can guarantee at town meeting versus finding out later on during the process that it might be something that town really didn't want.
I I agree completely, and I think that it may, might make sense also for me to look into whether we can have the motion actually say that they are to be conveyed for affordable housing purposes. We could have written the motion that way, and we could have written the warrant article that way. But I I I will look into whether that's just something we could put in the motion, because I have a feeling that's, you know, that's something I think we would be more more comfortable with too. If if they're, if they're built as affordable, they're they're going to stay affordable. If for whatever reason they were sold as market rate, which I I don't see that happening, but I can't say, I couldn't promise you that it could never happen. I I agree. I will definitely look into whether we can, you know, word the motion such that it it limits it to affordable housing.
Since, you know, since you've asked for feedback, I would just struggle with allowing the town to convey it for free and then finding out later it was developed for profit.
Oh, that we definitely can't do. That we're not, we're not allowed to do legally, we're not allowed to do that. So if.
So that's why.
Right. They would, if there were to be, if it were to be conveyed for market redevelopment, we would have, we would, we would have to sell it. Like, we're not allowed to actually give it for less than what it's worth and then allow someone to develop it. So, yes, you're right. And I I think I will try to figure out what the right, what the right motion is to to be sure that we're very clear that this is for affordable housing development only.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Danielle?
Yes.
This is Chris. This is Chris Hayden.
Hello, Chris. Go ahead, please.
So there was a chat that came up from the representative for Habitat for Humanities, which is on a, on the Zoom call. And he, he or she said that all properties from Habitat for Humanities are deed restricted. That's the way they do it. And being a member of the CPC, that is the only way these properties would get conveyed, as far as I'm concerned. And I think the other four members are in agreement with that. That's, I was on the board when we originally put these parcels in a affordable overlay district. And that's what the, that's what the thought and and the reason for doing that was to make them affordable always.
Yes, I agree with that one hundred percent. I I also agree that we want to make sure that the motion is worded so that it's crystal clear that that this is for affordable housing development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other folks who'd like to make a comment or ask a question? I'm not seeing any hands raised, but feel free to speak up if I'm not seeing you. Maureen? Hi, Maureen.
Yes, Maureen Dari, not throwing transcript, how are you?
Thank you, how are you?
Good. Are you planning on having any site visits for any of these places?
Yes, we should definitely do that. I think if we are, if if the town meeting vote is successful and we begin the drafting of an RFP, I I think site visits would be definitely something we would do. I I think two proposers would be invited to site visits as well. But yes, I I I think that that would be important as part of the community meetings that we would have.
Would it, would there be enough time to do site visits prior to town meeting so that people have a better understanding of what they're looking at, what they're hearing?
I don't see why not. I think that's something that we could arrange if if people are interested in in seeing, in seeing the properties. Sure. I will probably need to figure out when that would be and just make that known.
I could help you publicize that.
Sure, okay, thank you. Okay, why don't, why don't we be in touch? And then we can figure out what can can be published so that people can know how and when they they could, they could take a look at these properties.
Does anyone at the meeting think that that would be a helpful thing to do? Just the, just in general, the people who are who are on this meeting right now? Would you like to have a site walk with someone from the CPC and Danielle? To explain what they have in their mind for decision?
I think that's a good idea.
Um, yeah, we would be happy to do that. Okay, um, absolutely. I think, just in terms of being easy to communicate with people, if you, I'm just trying, I know I have mailing addresses, but I want to, I want a nice, easy way that I can reach out to people. All right, I guess I I I'll figure that out. But yes, Maureen, I I would appreciate it if there is a way that we can work together to, to, you know, to to publicize that. Sure, thank you.
Danielle?
Yes.
We're going to have to check with DPW, because I think fifty seven Haverhill is being used as a as a, in the area to prep for the Mount Vernon Street water main.
Yes, it is.
That that's what a lot, there was a lot of activity in there. And someone asked me the question this past week, if they were already building in there. And no, they're not building in there. That's just a location to to prep and to to park cars and vehicles and material for the Haverhill, for the Mount Vernon Street. So you just got to get clearance from the DPW that there are going to be people walking around in there. If we do that, maybe even parking a car or two.
Okay, okay.
All right.
I would definitely do that. Okay.
Danielle, this is Jay from Heritage Way again. I have one more question. In your, in your previous slide, there is upcoming meetings, a couple of dates. The September twenty meeting, what's the purpose of that? I know this warrant, warrant article.
Yes, so prior to town meeting, the select board always holds an informational hearing on all the warrant articles. So that's open to the public. This is going to be held virtually. And the, so the, that the Zoom information is posted for the select board. And they basically go through the whole warrant and people have, the public has the opportunity to comment or ask questions or give feedback. And this is kind of the the run through of the warrant before town meeting, which would happen on October fourth.
Okay, what's a warrant in this case?
Oh, so you'll be getting in the mail. It's basically the list of proposals for the town meeting, which will be on October fourth, Monday night in the high school. And that's, it's just the warrant will just be, it's a paper book that details all of the questions that are, that are going to be raised for for vote. And and these four properties are the subject of of warrant articles for town meeting.
And how about October fourth town meeting? Is that a meeting for for everybody to vote? Or do we, do we actually get to vote or not?
Yeah. Yes, so at town meeting, yes, as long as you're a registered voter, it's an open town meeting. So every registered voter has has a vote.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Danielle?
Yes.
This is Maureen again. Just for informational purposes for Jay. The town sends that warrant out two weeks prior to town meeting to every residential address. So they should probably be getting it, well, maybe the end of this week. That, would that be two, four weeks before town meeting? Or maybe the end of next week?
Maureen, I heard from Mike, the TA, that it should be this Saturday.
This Saturday, okay. And it's also posted on the town website, so you can view it digitally as well. And that will give you an overview of everything that will be happening at town meeting.
Um, yeah, so the the town website, I'm just going to put it in the chat really quick. It's on north reading, ma.gov. And you can find the information about, you know, town meeting and upcoming select board meetings on there.
Okay, I, it's a final question. And so I I mentioned, I mentioned the stream on the back of the house, rain gets really huge. It's right up against the house of my neighbor on the back, Mike Donahue. And, and I, I don't know if, uh, can someone, um, from the town or the builders or proposer come to take a look? And 'cause I know that Mike, uh, build a, build a huge wall just to prevent his house from sliding and up there, because we're, we're right up against the water, you know, my, my property and his property.
Hmm.
Um, that's another situation that could be potentially brewing.
Okay, no, that's a good idea.
Yeah, 'cause it's so when it, it, you, you can't see until you, you go there and to, to assess and evaluate, because that's, he put a lot of, um, uh, crushed stone there and he also planted a lot of stuff. That's for water management. And, and that, and that's, that's, um, that, that's a situation other than the, the water flooding situation coming to the, his house and then my house and then Mike DeChar's house.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think that's definitely something, um, we should take a look at. Um, so thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if Mike is on, on, on the line. He, he could, he could tell you a little more detail on that. Mike, are you online?
Yeah, Jay, I'm on, I, I can echo your comments. You know, there, there is a brook.
Yes, Jay, I'm here, buddy.
Well, both, both mics then. There is a brook that runs between, uh, my house, um, forty-one Haverhill Street and Jay on Heritage. Um, you know, it's a, it's a constant, constant brook. And when we do get heavy rains, um, you know, the brook definitely gets enhanced. Um, you know, and, and it does work from, it runs north to south, so it's, it's originating from, you know, the, the chestnut ends and then it runs down towards the high tension wires. So, um, it does run through the, the fifty-seven Haverhill, uh, parcel.
Yeah, I don't think there's a problem now, but if there is potential huge flood because of mismanagement, that could be an issue actually. So that's, that's my, my concern. Mike, I didn't know that was you there. I was, uh, I didn't know that was you there.
Thank you.
Is there any, uh, is there any, uh, pre-construction work that the town would do? Um, pre-escavations for perk tests or, or any, anything prior to the RFP going out to determine if, if the land does perk out to either limit the, you know, to try to dial in where, where the lot, you know, the, the development would go on fifty-seven Haverhill? Or would that all be full disclosure for the developer after the RFP process?
I think that level of work will be for the developer. Um, and it would probably happen in that sort of due diligence period between choosing a developer and actually closing on, on the property and conveying it. Um, I, I think that the town can, can make some guesses about where a pro, development is most likely to happen, but we probably wouldn't be doing the soil testing for the developer. We probably would, would leave that to their responsibility.
If, if the property is determined to be wetlands, to meet the definition of wetlands, because it's affordable housing, does that mean that the restrictions about building on wetlands don't apply?
No, they still apply. They would still need to file with the Conservation Commission if the building would be taking place within the hundred-foot, um, buffer zone and, um, the, the Conservation Commission would treat it in the same way.
'Cause we, we, we have butted general property on Heritage Way, and it's a marsh. And I always thought we were safe from overdevelopment because it's a marsh. And so i- it's wonderful to have a buffer zone so that North Reading doesn't turn into just one concrete block after another. And I always figured we're safe because all of that land is so wet. But the concern is that there'll be enough political pressure to allow it to be developed, that land will be approved, even though it's, and nobody could walk that property and question whether it meets the definition of wetlands. All you have to do is buy a brand-new pair of shoes and then throw them away afterwards because they've been soaked. And so the idea, my concern is there'll be enough political pressure to say, you know what, we can let it get built on 'cause we need the affordable housing. And so let's, let's bypass the rules. And then everyone who abuts the property, like Jay and the Mikes and everybody else, has unbelievable problems that they're then financially on, on the hook to try to solve because their basements are wet.
I mean, we definitely aren't looking to have any of the construction take place on the wetlands. Um, the Conservation Commission wouldn't allow for construction on there, like within the twelve-foot no disturb. Um, there can be construction within the buffer area, like the hundred feet, or I guess it would be the, you know, the eighty-eight feet between the end of the buffer zone and, you know, the, the end of the hundred-foot buffer. Um, but those, the wetlands themselves don't, wouldn't be built on. Um, I, I, I wouldn't imagine that the Conservation Commission would ever approve that, and that's certainly not our, our goal in trying to, to do this. Um, I think we know that there is, um, an area of fifty-seven Haverhill that's flatter when you first enter the property. Um, it's, it's flatter uplands. That part of the prop, the parcel is probably gonna be the most appropriate for development. We know there are wetlands along the side and, and along the back. They're, they're definitely wetlands, and we would not, we wouldn't expect to see those developed. Um, but I definitely hear your concerns, and I, I, you're right. I mean, this is why we have a Conservation Commission. And I don't think that, you know, there's anyone who's really pushing to see the wetlands themselves developed that wouldn't be, um, you know, environmentally responsible.
Danielle, I'll just echo, you know, the, the saturation of the land. And do you know if the Conservation Commission would, would perform a walk? You know, when's the last time the, the land was classified for wetlands, if that's, if that has expanded or not? Um, do you know if that would be taken into consideration?
Yeah, I think usually the way they handle new development is, um, if there are wetlands anywhere in the vicinity, they usually ask for them to be flagged, either to show where the, where the resource area is in preparation for a filing or to show that they're outside of it. So, um, I mean, if there is some question, you know, generally the conservation agent will go out and take a look and say, you know, yes, you are definitely close enough to what I know is a wetland, like you have to flag it and you have to do a filing. Um, sometimes she's able to see, you know, right away, um, if, if a proposed project is, is far enough that there's no way it's gonna be within the buffer, but yeah.
Wouldn't it be a good idea that that pre-work is done before we ever get to the decision of people proposing and, and voting on it? Because it could be that when people actually walk the property, they're gonna say, this is a, it's not quite a swamp, but it's, it certainly isn't solid ground. It's, it's so wet. I, I would think it would make sense, in the interests of time and energy and money, to determine before we go any further, whether this is buildable land. Because the, the property that borders our property, I mean, I, I have to wear nine-inch waterproof boots anytime I go back there to like, trees fall down all the time because their root systems, if you walk the property, like with Mike DeChar's property, you'll see one tree on its side after another because the, the, the root systems rot out from all the water and the trees just fall over in a heavy wind.
Right.
So before we have town votes or anything, it seems like it would be logical to survey the property from a wetlands standpoint, because the answer might be, on paper, this looked like a great idea. In reality, we can't build on most of this.
Well, I mean, I, I have walked the property. I mean, I, I do know there are parts of the property that, that aren't wet. Um, I, I don't, I mean, I can't flag the wetland myself, but I can see that there are areas of the property that are, you know, that, that would be feasible for, for development. But, um, I, I understand what you're saying. So, um, I mean, for fifty-seven Haverhill, I mean, in particular, because we know there are water issues, um, might we explore, um, doing some, you know, town, you know, work to, to confirm the, the conditions on that site? Is that?
Yeah, Danielle, when I, when I had my, uh, addition, uh, in the garage bill, uh, five years ago, um, I actually had to go through, uh, town approval. Um, I think it's the water zoning or something. They had, they had asked, and, and they had asked if the, uh, wetland needs to be seventy-five feet or a hundred feet away from the construction site. And so I had to go through that. I, I missed what you said on the slide. One of the slides said it has to be how many feet away from the wetland? Was, was that on there?
If it's within a hundred feet of the wetland, it needs to, um, it, there's a filing with the Conservation Commission. And then they determine where the development can go and how it can proceed and, you know, under what conditions. Um, and they can say no if it's within that buffer area. If, if, you know, it's too much of an impact to the wetlands, they, you know, they may not allow it. Um, so that's, yeah, they, yes, anything that is within that buffer area or near the wetland, they are gonna require to be flagged and to, to show exactly where, where the upland areas are. I mean, we would anticipate normally that would be part of the due diligence of a developer. And if a developer got the property and realized that they couldn't develop what they hoped to, um, you know, that's, I mean, that has happened. Um, we wouldn't foresee a situation where the property looks to be, you know, harder to develop than we thought. And so we just let them build wherever. I mean, we, we, I mean, we're still, we're, keep, you know, the Conservation Commission is still keeping its, its rules. And it, it's still the same process. Um, but I definitely understand your concern.
Sure. I, I, I just, uh, I, I just didn't get anything, uh, in the mail. That's why I asked the question now. Because eventually, if the flood is, if the flood, the flood is gonna be caused, it's gonna come into our property. So that's why, um,
Okay.
I'm asking you extra questions here.
Sure. No, I understand.
Thank you for that answer.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Danielle, this is Jeff again at one-twelve Chestnut.
Yes.
Um, I wanted to ask one other question. You made reference to targets for affordable housing for the town and that, you know, uh, those numbers were deficient. You anticipated they would grow. Um, other than there being a need, are there incentives for the town to sort of satisfy that target? How is that target set? And is there some incentive for the town to hit that target? In other words, is there state money that you guys get when you meet that number? Like, why are you do, why, why does this exist at all other than just trying to sort of serve a deed? Does that make sense, that question?
Yes, yes. So the, the state's Affordable Housing Law, um, chapter forty B requires that all towns and cities have ten percent of their, of their regular year-round housing stock to be, um, subsidized and to, to meet a certain level of affordability under certain terms. Um, North Reading has, I think that the last census was like five thousand five hundred ninety-seven units of housing. And we only have, we have less than ten percent of that is, is subsidized and is, and is counted on our, on our inventory. When a town has more than ten per, ten percent or more, they've met the, they've met the, the, the state law. Um, but when they are under that threshold, they don't have the ability to say no to, um, developments that come in under chapter forty B if, if it's something that the town doesn't want. Perfect example is, um, you know, the proposal for twenty Elm Street, which, um, has been in litigation for some time now. This was a proposal that the town that the ZBA tried to say no to, but is not able to say no to under, or can say no to, but it's, 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 um, you know, we, the town loses its ability to say no to forty B projects, which override the local zoning. So, once you hit the forty B threshold of ten percent, the town has the ability to look at a project and say, no, that's not one that we want. Um, when, when you're under the, the ten percent, um, the town is more vulnerable to a project that it might have preferred to say no to because it feels it's not appropriate for one reason or another. Um, so I, I hope that sort of answers your question.
Yeah, so leveraging control.
Yeah, it's, it's about maintaining the local zoning control, exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Jill Gadsby, is her hand up?
Yes, hi Danielle, Jill Gadsby thirteen Lee Road. Um, I just wanted to go on record and echo Dawn's comments that, you know, I think, um, the neighborhood would prefer to, um, preserve the character. Uh, it's all single-family homes right now. I think you've mentioned there was one in-law apartment. Um, so I'm not, I know it's a very small parcel. You're combining the two. Um, I think a duplex even, or any type of multifamily, um, building would be uncharacteristic of the neighborhood. So I just wanted to provide that feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there other questions?
Hi Danielle, uh, Tim Sutherland seventeen Maple. One last question. I stepped away for a minute. I'm not sure if this was asked, so I apologize if it was. Does the approval or, or, or not of the, of these articles, does that impact the Elm Street project in any way whatsoever?
It does not. Um, the, they have an approval, not a, not a town approval, but they have a project eligibility approval from the state to go ahead and, um, apply for their, for their project. Um, that, that is based on the percentage of affordability that the town had the day they applied. So, anything we develop now doesn't impact twenty Elm Street in the future. It would eventually, when we get to ten percent, it, it will eventually impact future projects that come in. So every little bit helps us to reach that goal. And also, I shouldn't say that we're looking to do affordable housing only because we want to hit our ten percent. We're looking to do it because we recognize the need for, um, you know, for affordable housing.
Okay, so, so basically, safe to say the message is that we can vote based on the merits of this project and people can't go around saying it impacts the Elm Street project.
It would not impact.
That's good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Danielle, do you have, do you have any more hands raised?
I am looking for hands raised now. Scrolling through my two pages of participants. I don't see a hand raised. If I'm missing you, feel free to shout out.
Okay, I have, I have one more comment tied up to, uh, Kyle's comments about the trees. And, and I think in the past couple of years, we had excessive rains between Mike's house and my house on the, in the forest. We already lost, uh, handful of trees there. And, uh, and that, that, the trees in the forest is the main reason that we bought the property. So, um, and if we lose more trees and the forest is not there, and that, that, that's a big no-no for us. So I mean, it's just, just wanna mention it.
Okay, thank you. I will note that, that goal is to try to keep as much of the, the natural tree buffer there as possible. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Um, I have, um, a, a lot of great feedback here. Um, thank you very much, um, you know, for everyone who's given comments. If you think of something that you didn't have a chance to say, um, I'm also gonna put my email address in the chat. Um, feel free to reach out. Um, it's the McKnight at North. Of, um, my phone number, seven eight three five seven five two oh six. Um, I will be compiling all these comments and passing them along to, um, our liaison on the select board. Um, the select board has not yet taken a position on this warrant article, and I think they were waiting for some neighborhood feedback. So they'll, they'll wanna hear what we heard tonight. Um, I'll be looking into, um, what we can do, um, on town meeting floor with regard to those motions to make sure that we're, you know, very clear that we're only conveying for affordable housing. Um, and, uh, we're looking to also doing a, a, a day of, of, or an afternoon or an evening of site visits to, for anyone who's interested in seeing those properties. Um, so, thank you very much, um, to everyone. I really appreciate your taking the time to, um, to let us know your thoughts about, about these, these proposals.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle.
All right. Thank you so much. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.